Good morning, everyone. I'm John Colwell. Fortunate to be a chair of this distinguished organization along with my fellow trustees Dennis Traynor, Cecily Morris, Louis Warren, B Gonzalez, Michael Cusick stepped out and is stepping back in, and Lori Weelock is joining us virtually today along with Justin and his team that will be in and out throughout the course of our discussions and presentations. As always, this meeting's been duly noticed as required by open meetings law. And with that, I'm pleased to call the Joint NIPA and Canal Board Meeting to order. We've all had the opportunity to review the agenda as presented, unless there's any thoughts or comments, recommendations for changes, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Thank you, Dennis. Second, Michael. Third from Louis. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Contractors list, again, everyone's had the opportunity to respond. If there's any late-breaking conflicts or changes, please so indicate, otherwise we'll assume we're in good order there. With our year-end December meeting, it's the time of year when we both look back and reflect on accomplishments of 23. In this case, also take a first look ahead to 24. So it's a great time to reflect as well as re-energize. But before we do, we will, as we typically do, start our meeting in executive session.
I think Lori Weelock has a question or comment?
Lori, sorry.
Yeah. No, no worries. Good morning, everyone. Lori Weelock, she hears pronouns. And again, I'm joining remotely. Since I am remote today, recovering from a planned surgery and not there, I won't be able to vote. But I did want to flag that if I did have the opportunity to be there today, I was going to abstain on Consent Agenda Item 5B2. This involves NIPA's transfer of ownership of six retired vehicles to different educational institutions. And one of those is the City of Albany Public High School. As a proud mother of two kids in the City of Albany School District, I just wanted to flag that I was not at all involved in this process, but obviously excited to see this happen because it'll be a tremendous addition to the tech students who are doing career development work. So big thanks to NIPA, but just wanted to flag that and explain why I would have abstained from my vote. So thank you, everyone.
All right. Thanks, Lori. As I said, we, as we typically do, we'll start the meeting in executive session to address assorted matters pursuant to Section 105 of the Public Officers Law. So if I can, I'd ask for a motion to do so. Thank you, Dennis. Second, Michael. B, third. B's the second. Michael's the third. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. With that, we'll be back to you in a bit. Welcome back. If I could have a motion to resume our meeting in open session?
I'll move.
Thank you, Dennis. Second. Second, Louis. Michael. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. As I said before, we took a break for exec discussion. Always an enjoyable dialogue come December, year end. Opportune time, necessary time to look back on all that's been accomplished and the challenges and opportunities of, in this case, 2023. That said, with all that's come at us and responsibilities and opportunities that we have, first look ahead to 24 becomes all the more critical. So as we navigate through our focus as a board, which is in combination of strategic risk management and operational oversight, you'll hear that theme repeated, first from Justin and Eve in terms of the strategic overview, Justin's broader view of the organization. It'll touch a lot of bases, but then Eve in particular on the strategic efforts into the risk world. Alexis has been on the ground for 60 days, opportunity to share some reflections and perspectives there. Eric, the world's an increasingly dangerous place or more so every day. Bring us current on how we're navigating all of that. Joe Kessler in the group in terms of the operational challenges, and then Adam as to how all that impacts financial performance, and more importantly, opportunities to fund and finance our incremental responsibilities. Couple of committee reports, and we'll wrap up an agenda. But we'll be one, look forward, as always, to good, robust discussion and interaction around the board table. So with that, pleased to introduce our CEO, President and CEO, Mr. Justin. Kick us off.
All right. Well, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Glad to be here today. Can't believe we're at the end of 2023 already, looking into 2024. But, you know, we start off, what a great time it is to be working in the energy industry and as part of the clean energy transition. And we're delighted at NIPA to be playing a leading role. It's also a great time to be working here at NIPA and Canals. We see that in the level of our interest, level of interest in our staff and the level of engagement of our, of our team here, both at NIPA and Canals. And we continue to strengthen our management team. We just hired our new VP of Renewables, Vinay Yehadi, who's here. And we continue to develop the team to meet the challenges ahead. And we'll be well positioned as we go into 2024 with, with our team and with the, with the strong mandate that we have and the strong group that are able to execute it. So I thought maybe just take a look back at some 2023 accomplishments as we get started here. We'll start with transmission. If I could have that slide up? There we go. You've seen this before. I think as you look at this, and we've talked to you about this before, but there's no one playing a bigger role in New York State in the build-out of our transmission system, whether upgrading existing lines to carry more capacity of renewable energy or even building new lines around the state. As you can see on the, on the right, these are all the transmission projects underway, and we have more than half of them that we're either doing alone or in partnership with the private sector in building out the transmission system. And as we all know, you can build all the renewables that you want, but if you don't have a transmission system to move them around the state, we're not going to reach our goal. So we're very proud of the role we're playing on the transmission side. And I give a lot of credit to Phil Toy and his development team and the operations team who work hand in hand to deliver on these projects. So a lot has gone on in 2023. The first is, I'm pleased to say that just last week, we energized Central East Energy Connect, which is these orange lines here. That was a NISO awarded project, PPTN, that was designed to relieve congestion in a very congested area of the state called the Central East Interface. So that project we did in partnership with LS Power, and we just energized that line. In fact, they'll be going up there tomorrow to do a little ribbon cutting with the, with the NISO and our partner at LS Power. So, so that is, is a huge 2023 accomplishment. Also, earlier this year, I was up in the North Country with Trustee Morris to announce the completion of our Smart Path project, which we were very happy to say was under budget and on time. So Smart Path was a, was a project that was designed to upgrade, upgrade the, this north-south line between, between the Canadian border and the Marcy area. So that's been completed now, and that'll be 345 KV from 230 KV. And then in association with that, we're currently underway on what we call Smart Path Connect, which is a priority transmission project awarded by, awarded by the Public Service Commission, which is designed to, again, un-bottle renewables in the North Country so that we can get all that renewable generation that's being built up there down into, down into Central New York and then on its way down into the load centers in, in New York City. On Clean Path, which we talk a lot about here, which is our partnership with, with Invenergy and Energy Re DC Cable, running from, from basically right in here in the Cascillary and down into New York City, into Queens, into our facility in Astoria, designed to bring upstate renewables into New York City on a fully underground DC cable utilizing primarily NIPA's right-of-way for 100 of 180 of the miles of that route. And, and we're now in the Article VII process at the Public Service Commission, and we have, we have engineering in progress on that, on that project. So the next slide, please, also transmission-related. We anticipate construction completion on Smart Path Connect in 2024. And we're pending anticipator Article VII approval in Q2 on Clean Path, as I mentioned. And then another huge success in 2023 was the award of the Propel New York Energy Project by, again, by the NISO in the New York City region. That's in the box on the right there, designed to enable offshore wind from Long Island to be distributed throughout Long Island and, and sometimes off of Long Island into Westchester when, when there's excess generation on the Long Island system. And that's a project that we're doing in partnership with New York Transco. And we were awarded that project earlier in 2023 and in the early stages of that and working with communities on that project. So huge amount of, huge amount of accomplishment on the transmission side in 2023. We're super excited about the role we're playing there. And then if I could move next to the next slide, the utility operations slide.
Before I do that, so in terms of aligning transmission and generation, editorialize a bit on how well aligned we are. And any concerns you have or we have organizationally about our ability as renewables and other power companies, our ability to move it? We're part of the solution with this. Want to make sure we're leading with transmission versus getting ahead of ourselves? Talk to that, if you would, for a little bit?
Yeah, well, certainly, you know, what we bring to the table on transmission is, and is one of the reasons why we keep getting selected in these competitive processes, is that nobody understands, understands the New York grid and the New York system like we do. We have the ability and the luxury to be able to study, study the grid regularly. And where that's going to really come, come in handy, if you will, and to our benefit is that as we're looking at citing and developing renewable projects under our new authority, we're going to have sort of the inside track on where the system is going to best accommodate renewables. So we bring that expertise to the table every day as we, as we work on transmission. And now it's going to have the added benefit of helping us determine where we could cite renewables in the most cost-effective way closest to our, to our transmission system. So great synergies between the two groups. Obviously, you have the development side, which is, you know, getting us to the approval stage and then turning over the reins to the operations, utility operations and project development and project management team to actually get the projects built. So I think the skills are somewhat transferable, but I think, you know, as, as we saw with the hiring of a new VP for Renewables, we will need to build, build up our expertise on the renewable generation development side. But we think that a lot of the work that we've done on transmission is, like I said, skill sets are, are in some ways transferable.
So no concerns or issues as you look ahead relative to the transmission projects that are in process on, on the drawing board and our ability to source power where it's needed across the state, in particular relative to where it was and wasn't five, six, you know, 10 years ago?
Yeah. No, I think, well, certainly the Clean Path line and the other, the companion project, Champlain Hudson Power Express are gonna, are gonna do a lot to address the, what we call the tail of two grids with the heavy dependence on fossil in the New York City area and an abundance of renewables upstate. So the idea is obviously to get those renewables down into the New York City region. Those two lines will have a huge impact there, as will offshore transmission. We're playing a role on the offshore transmission side indirectly on Propel New York by facilitating the upgrade of the grid to be able to accommodate what, what will be 9,000 megawatts of offshore wind coming into the system. So we're really excited about, about that. I mean, I think there will be other opportunities, and we continue to look for other transmission opportunities, particularly under our Priority Transmission Project Authority that the Public Service Commission gave us a couple of years ago. So Phil will tell you, I'm always challenging the team to look for that, look for that next PTP.
That we're focused on.
Well, so there, you know, there's, there's still areas in the state that, that need transmission, you know, work. There are a couple that we've sort of preliminarily identified in the Watertown area and Southern Tier that could potentially be opportunities down the road. But we wait on the NISO typically, you know, to stage these. And so the next, the next opportunity is the New York City offshore wind PPTN. That's going to be a huge project, and we're looking for opportunities to participate in that. And that, that's something that will be, I think we brought to your attention earlier, but we'll be, we hopefully, you know, making some decisions around whether we have a bid to go into that next solicitation. So that'll be coming up next, the New York City offshore wind PPTN, which would interconnect offshore wind into, into the Five Burrows. And then we'll wait to see if the next opportunity is upstate. But like I said earlier, we're already studying all these things. So we've got such a head start, given our, given our ownership and operation of a, of a third of the grid. So, so a lot going on there, but also a lot on the generation side. We've talked to you about our Next Gen Niagara, $1.1 billion, 15-year effort to upgrade the core parts of the Niagara Power Project. We're well underway in that. We've already done the control room, as I think many of you have seen on the tour, brand-new control room there. The next phase is really the big work, which is each of the 13 turbine units will come out and be out of service and totally upgraded. And the next one we're going to take out, or the first one we're going to take out is Unit 6, which will be out for 15 months as we upgrade that unit, and then we'll, we'll sequence them. I don't know what comes after Unit 6. Maybe Joe, you know what's up next, but we'll be staging those. No. Well, it's one of the remaining 12. And also, downstate, we added 170, 175 kilowatt solar array to the roof at the Zeltman Power Project in Astoria in 2023. We also brought online our, our North Country Energy Storage Facility. This is a state-owned, public ownership of a battery, utility-scale battery that we've deployed. And we've cited the storage right next to our transmission system, hopefully in an effort to maximize wholesale market revenue and demonstrate that storage integration in a renewable-rich area of the state is a, is a wise, is a wise investment. So we're a leader in battery storage as well. And then finally, we always enjoy talking about our, our drone program and all the advancements there. And, you know, this started out in 2018 as a pilot project, but in 2023, the program received an additional $11 million funding approval to build out a, a platform, a single platform that'll manage all of our drone operations. So it's really expanded since its formation in 2018. It's become an integral part of our inspection of our transmission system. And we're, we're one of the leaders in drone deployment in the state as a result of that investment. Moving to the customer side, you know, huge focus of ours, of our, of our governmental and economic development customers, and just a couple of highlights of some key projects on the customer side. Joe will be talking about some highlights in his report as well, but just wanted to mention a couple of, a couple of projects that are interesting. For the New York City Health and Hospitals, at Lincoln Hospital, we did LED lighting, wireless thermostat integration and controls, and building management system upgrades, and in the process reduced their JHG emissions by 3,600 metric tons. And then at the Bronx Zoo, Bronx Zoo is actually powered by a, powered by a four-megawatt Cogen plant, which was built in 1986. And we've done a significant amount of work at the zoo by upgrading their medium-temperature water that's, that serves 13 of the buildings on site for hot water heating. And we also replaced their waste, waste recovery boiler to extract more heat from the Cogen plant and replaced the controls in the heating exchange to deliver more heat efficiently to the zoo. So just a couple of kind of, I think, cool, cool projects there to, to highlight. And, and in addition to that, a couple others that we wanted to just mention that are in the works for the Corrections for Docks at the Willard Powerhouse Facility. We're going to do operations and maintenance to the heating systems there. And then at CUNY, York College in Queens, we're providing LED lighting and controls to the academic core building. So a lot of great work going on on the customer side. As you know, this is a focus of ours as we try to help our governmental customers decarbonize their operations. We've always been viewed as their trusted energy advisor, and so we're tapping into that reputation with them to help them in their decarbonization journey as they all have the same goals that they need to meet, and they look to us for, for help in, in how to get there. Moving now to the innovation side of the house. As you know, this has been a new focus and hopefully trying to elevate with bringing Daniella Piper back from Niagara in, in her role as EVP and Chief Innovation Officer. But one of the, one of the things that we wrapped up in 2023, which we're very proud of, is our, is our new sort of foray into the broadband business, if you will. The state legislature in the state budget a couple of years ago gave us the ability to, to utilize our broadband network on our transmission system to serve in what they call a middle-mile role between broadband and communities. And so what we were able to do through that pilot, along with ESD, is to connect communities that were either underserved or unserved at all with broadband to our fiber networks. When we put fiber on our transmission system, we had excess capacity that we were able to deploy some of it to this, to this exercise. And as a result, there are 3,200 underserved or unserved locations that now have, that now have broadband as a result of this work that we've done. And now we're recognized, as a result of that, working closely with ESD now on the bigger ConnectAll effort, which is going to be a statewide rural broadband deployment effort funded by federal, federal dollars. So a great outcome there. In fact, we'll be, we'll be celebrating the completion of that this week as well. And then also on the innovation side, at SUNY Purchase, very close by here, we installed last year thermal energy storage unit paired with a microturbine there at Purchase. And we're, we'll have, we'll have the ability then to compare performance with a conventional combined heat and power CHP plant with final commissioning commenced just this past September. And EPRI will be working with us on that. On the canal side, obviously, a major focus was our Reimagine efforts that we launched several years ago, looking closely at how, how to tweak that. And we've come to you with some modifications, what we called Reimagine 2.0. But we continue to work on both maintenance and asset monitoring of the system, but at the same time, working on some projects that we got underway in 2023, the Brockport Pedestrian Bridge that many of you saw at our last board meeting under Reimagine, and also working closely with DEC on invasive species in Champlain Canal. And, and finally, with Brian Stratton's leadership, the Upstate Flood Mitigation Task Force published its report in July of 2023. So a lot going on on the canal side as well. We also did a couple of asset maintenance projects called the, one, the Glenns Fall Feeder, Glenns Falls Feeder Canal. And secondly, did some earth and embankment work out in Royalton by putting in a, a cutoff wall there to further secure that area. We had several awards that you'll hear of later on the Reimagine side, but on the environmental front in Canals, we partnered with EHS and DEC to, as I said, work on the invasive species mitigation. And, and finally, the Ralph Wilson Foundation, that I know we're very familiar with, with some of their partnership on the Brockport Bridge. They also announced an additional $2.6 million in support of the Empire State Trail Project in Medina. So that's just a quick, quick summary of some of the highlights from 2023. And then, you know,
Before you jump to 24, so give us, so what does all that say? You know, a lot of details there, but give us the big picture from top of the house. How do you assess 23?
So 23, I think, was a huge success. Obviously, the biggest development in 2023 was the, was the Renewable Authority that we were granted in the state budget. We will speak to that in more detail in a minute. But, you know, as you look back at 2023, you know, as I look at the business, transmission, generation, customer, the three big, you know, like, three legs of the stool, if you will, all, all three firing on all cylinders. I mentioned the transmission work, generation work, and that generation work will now include renewable generation in the future. And then just the work with our customers on their, on their decarbonization, decarbonization journey, journeys. All of them are going gangbusters, all three legs of the stool, not, not to mention, obviously, the canal, the canal work and all the work that we're doing there to, to prepare the canal for another century of operation. And as we, as we know, in 2025, we'll have the World Canals Conference, we'll be hosting in Buffalo, and we'll also be celebrating the bicentennial in 2025 as well. So I think we're, you know, we're, we're coming off a great year, but 2024 is, is going to be, I think, really exciting for us.
Before you jump to that, questions of Justin? Lori, you have a question?
I did. Thank you, John, and thank you, Justin. Going back really quickly, the transmission side, you know, definitely was concerned about potential supply chain issues and things of that nature. But it sounds like, especially with Smart Path, it finished on time and under budget, which is, which is really good. But just wanted to take a quick pause, Justin, and see, are we expecting any supply chain issues to affect our transmission work in 2024? Or so far, where we're looking right now, we're doing okay?
But I think we're, you know, the, the one that's obviously most recent is Propel. So we can come back to you on whether we're experiencing anything there. But I would say with the, the majority of our transmission work, you know, all those contracts and all those bids were, were entered into largely before the inflation and supply chain issues that the industry, you know, faced. So and that's why some of those, most of those projects, you know, were able to come in on budget, you know, and on time. We'll have to watch closely Propel New York Energy just because it's earlier stage. I know from our discussions with our partners at Clean Path that a lot of the procurement on the Clean Path New York line was also, you know, secured early. And so, so, so there's, there are, there's that. I mean, I know there's renewable generation behind the Clean Path project. And though some of those projects, as you know, are, you know, we're seeking relief from the PSC. So we'll have to see where that all ends up. There are going to be rebid now, the state's addressing that issue and, and doing a rapid rebid of those projects and then addressing it further through additional awards of projects. But, but then I think to answer your question, we've been largely spared so far, at least in terms of the transmission work that, you know, is later, later stage.
Okay, great. And yeah, if you could keep us posted on Propel New York, that would be wonderful. And anything else you all are seeing with, every, every day, things are changing and moving.
Right.
Back to the broadband piece really quickly. If we could get a list of the locations that have been served, I think that would be really interesting to see. And also, if we can determine which, you know, which I'm just guessing from, you know, our prior conversations, probably quite a few were in disadvantaged communities. I think that would be very helpful for the board as well.
Okay. And I'd be happy to supply that. But I will just mention that we were able to utilize our relationships with some of our existing Muni and co-op customers. So several of them are existing NIPA Muni customers. So we're, we're serving Sherburne, Nichols, Diana, and Pick Karen. Those, those four towns are the ones that we worked on in our pilot.
Anything else for Justin on 23? Let him jump ahead to 24. All right, keep driving.
Okay, we got it. All right, yep.
Come back to us with some of the particulars.
Yeah. So I mean, as, as we look, and we've talked to you about this before, but on the NIPA Renewables piece, we're already, you know, work is well underway already on the development of our strategic plan, which we'll be filing at the end of 2024. We'll be coming back to you for your review and approval. And then it's due by the legislation by January 31 of 2025. So that's going to be a huge effort as we look to not only develop our operating model for, for launching this new, essentially, line of business, but also making sure that, you know, we have the right team in place. And so we're, we're working very hard on that. There'll be, we'll be coming back to you regularly, I would say, at every meeting in 2024 on a status report on where we are there, because there's so much going on. And it's, it really will be the biggest thing we're doing in 2024, in my view. But there's a lot of other work going on. Also, we will be required to file our phase-out plan of our small natural gas power plants or peakers, which is also an outgrowth of the less budget. So a lot of work underway there with our, with stakeholders and the EJ communities in the areas around our plants. As I mentioned earlier, canal bicentennial. As I mentioned earlier, canal bicentennial is going to be a lot of work done in twenty twenty four to get ready for that. And then finally, I mentioned this also earlier, but we'll be I think we'll be a likely bidder. We're trying to figure out what that's going to look like. But in the next NISO solicitation for the New York City offshore wind projects, we hope to play a role there, but we'll be coming back to you. It's right in the middle of it right now. But but that's going to be a huge, huge twenty twenty four activity. And then at the same time, we're operating our generating facilities, our sixteen power plants, we're operating a third of the bulk transmission system in the state where we're serving serving our governmental customers and helping them save money on their energy bills and trying to be an economic an economic development engine for the state. We're a very critical economic development tool in the state's toolbox. So making sure that that we're supporting both the traction of businesses and retention of businesses through our economic development programs. So so twenty twenty four is really going to be an exciting year, and it's going to call upon us really, I think, to bring our A game every day. Not that we don't already, but this is going to be a lot of work this year, but we're ready for it. And as I mentioned, it's it's a pivotal moment in the energy industry right now with obviously, the some of the issues around some of the projects that are experiencing some of the supply chain and inflationary pressures. The state has a plan to address those, but it will also call upon us at NIPA to determine, you know, how can we lean in? What's the best role for NIPA to play in that process? And where are the gaps that NIPA should fill in in order to make sure that the state achieves its clean energy goals in this very dynamic market that we're in right now. But you know, I think we've got the right, we've got the right team in place. We know we're we have a history of being able to do big things here at the Power Authority. So we're well positioned to I think, to really advance the state's progress towards clean energy goals in twenty twenty four and beyond.
The conferral report that was just issued comment a bit on your what you think some of the key takeaways or insights that you glean from that and how it shapes or furthers your thinking, as you just said about how we lean into and lead in the renewables effort.
Yeah. So as you may know, we 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 reached out and met with over fifty stakeholders. You know, well, I played a leading role in in that in that process. I think, you know, we did, we did touch a broad spectrum of stakeholders. And so you know, everybody brought their own perspective to it. But I think what it what it did, I think, create for us was the the big takeaway was that there there needs to be a role for NIPA as we move forward. NIPA is a critical asset in the in the state's you know, portfolio. And so there's a there's just a a key, a key role for NIPA to play. And so the question, which will come out through our through our strategic planning processes, where you know, where are the gaps? How can we best move the needle at NIPA, given our expertise, both on the generation and the transmission side?
And what are your takeaways from what you heard as to how we step into the breach or how we lead or how we leverage or others or others leverage us? What any initial, you know, what are your initial thoughts and thinking on that?
Well, I think that most stakeholders express the view that NIPA needs to move quickly, that this is a this is a existential crisis we're facing. And to have an entity like NIPA that can play the role that we can play and and not be not be leading, not be a key part of the of the development of renewables would be a mistake. So I think that one of the key takeaways, and we hear it, we hear it consistently. This, you know, NIPA should NIPA should lean in, NIPA needs to NIPA needs to move, you know, as aggressively as possible with the new authority that the state has given us.
But we don't want to do that in lieu of private sector, and we want to enhance supplement complement.
But I think, yeah, I think the answer to that is we, in order to get the most projects built, you want to use all the available tools so that if we can leverage private sector participation through through NIPA's participation as well, we should be able to get more built that way, right? And if that's the goal, then then I think that that's a that's a logical partnership that
One plus one equals three or four is better than you know, one is one. So, yeah, okay. Thoughts, comments, Louis?
One question, Justin, on the conferral process. So what are the next couple of steps before it's it has to be posted?
We did, yes, we posted it on the website. So it's it's publicly available now. This is just, as I think I mentioned at our last meeting, this is just the beginning of a public engagement process. There's a lot of public engagement also called for in the development of our strategic plan. And so and that'll be a regular process that we that we will iterate and you know, continue to take because this, as we're as we're talking about the industry, it's it's changed, it's evolving. And so this is not a constant, you know, situation where you can just, you know, touch base with all your stakeholders once and 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 move on. This is going to have to be a continue a continuing process. So we'll we'll continue to confer, if you will, with stakeholders, but we'll also be engaging with them through the strategic planning process.
Justin, what's the feedback you've gotten thus far? I know it hasn't been posted. So has it caught anyone's attention yet?
Well, I mean, I think I mean, I think there's there've been some some press reports about the conferral process. It was a pretty lengthy report, but you know, I think that, as I said earlier, that the the big takeaway was, I think, a a recognition almost across the board. You know, obviously, some some entities maybe, you know, feel that that you know, that 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 there's no role for NIPA, but I think those were isolated. I think the overwhelming majority held the view that NIPA should play a role, an increasing role, and that it and and an essential role in in advancing the state's clean energy goals.
Okay, anything else? Lauren?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And again, thank you, Justin. I know Eve is going to be presenting soon as well, so I'll have some more specific questions about the conferral process. But I I do, you know, kind of just want to say, I think it's a good foundation. I like that I'm hearing, you know, NIPA is leaning into this and and listening and just kind of want to elevate that point that things are ever changing. And we just have to keep our ears open and eyes open constantly. So excited to kind of see this be really a growth moment. The conferral report is potentially the start, and then we just continue to grow and really push on that public engagement piece. So just wanted to add that. And again, I'll have more questions in a little bit when Eve presents.
Great. Well, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think the the design, I think, was was well thought out was that the conferral process was then designed to inform the development of the strategic strategic plan. So
Stakeholders, that's what it's all about. So, okay, great job. Thanks, Justin. Appreciate it. Yeah, as we just said, Eve, we're a few years into the next phase of our strategic plan that's ever evolving and changing. So Eve, the podium is yours to talk about where we are and where we're going and the pivots and the refresh and everything else as relevant.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. Good morning, the public. Good morning to the NIPA team. It's with a great sense of optimism that I bring to you the strategic update. To the points earlier, right? We're in an ever changing market that requires us to look forward into the future and and sort of provide this update so that you understand where we are and where we're going. Also, to due to the support of the board and management, we know that we are moving forward in in the direction of Vision twenty thirty that that has been outlined. So next slide, please. So we are going to start where we always start with our vision, with our mission, in which we're going to lead the transition for carbon free economically vibrant New York. And now, more than ever, this is a precedent and important mission for the state and the country, you know, as of November, there have been twenty five climate or weather related disasters that are over that have been over a billion dollar dollars in losses. But this is, these are significant, and it sort of reemphasizes the fact that NIPA's mission to combat climate change and lead this charge is more prescient than ever. And like how we manage to to address this change is our five strategic priorities. The following slides will talk about the five strategic priorities and our role going forward. Next slide, please. So just to orient everyone, we have the slide divvied up into three sections. First, we start with an indicative measure of our progress. Then we talk through a set of two thousand twenty three accomplishments. And then we end with our the the benefits to New York State. For instance, this slide here focused on preserve the value of our hydro, talk about how we're investing in our assets in order to continue to provide the renewable base for seventy by twenty thirty. Next slide, please. With in supporting for the hundred percent emissions free generation by twenty forty, we're involved in bringing new ideas and bringing new partners into the process for decarbonizing our generation, our our generation assets. Specifically, you see, we issued a solicitation for the reuse of the six NIPA sites in zone J and K. Next slide. In leading the transmission, Justin prevented provided a a wealth of information around the transmission. I won't sort of delve too much in here, but I think like what you'll see going forward and now is like a fair amount of investment in building out substations, upgrading transmission, all in an effort of unbottling renewables. Next slide, please. With partnering with our customers, here, sort of, I'm really, here we see that NIPA is partnering with our customers to address the major drivers for their CO2 emissions, right? And you can see industrial decarbonization with DCAST and the Department of Environmental Protection. We got public charging with the EVOL. We're doing transit bus charging program for helping to electrify our our bus systems. And then the unsung hip hero of decarbonization is sort of energy efficiency projects. Here's two examples, one with OGS at the Atom Clayton Power Building, and then another one replacing over six thousand five hundred lights at the one one World Trade Center. Now, look, across the state, we've done this year alone, we did sixty projects contributing to about twenty thousand considering to the reduction of twenty thousand greenhouse gas reductions this year alone. Okay, next slide. With reimagine the canal. So all the efforts in the past for strategic priorities are really about mitigation. How do we? How do we stop or slow the the rise? This slide is all about adaptation. With our canals, we're actually like we're actually adapting to climate change to a certain extent. Specifically, look at the Guide Park Manor Restoration, Phase One is underway, where we're we're doing manor restoration and stabilization. We've actually raised, you know, got it, brought it down to the studs, re revamping it, we've raised it and elevated it out of the the to to a higher ground, right? Next slide. The conferral report. So as as Justin mentioned, we we met with over fifty organizations, sat through all those sessions and like the the some there are many key themes that sort of resulted from this discussion. One was like, people were looking for more information around sort of what are the benefits and goals of CLCPA? Two, very in several places, they were looking for NIPA to help and support with sort of the they were looking to be additive to the process for renewables. And there are many sort of takeaways. I'll pause because I know Justice Trustee, we probably has a question or two here.
Yeah, thank you so much. And a couple from the earlier slides, but I'm happy to start here and see if, you know, my fellow trustees have more questions. You know, the the public engagement, as we've talked about, is so incredibly important to me. You know, really hearing from the communities up, especially the disadvantaged communities. I know that's something that's in our vision statement as well. And with the conferral process, you know, being a step in the greater, you know, longer range public engagement plan we have. Can you talk a little bit, though, Eve, if there is a group out there, for instance, who wasn't one of the stakeholders, but they want to submit comments? How can they do that? Do they do it through our website? Is there an email address?
So the conferral process is ongoing. So they are their their comments are welcomed. And it's through an email address. We've got the NIPA conferral renewables at nipa.gov email address comes directly to me. So so I'm more than happy to hear those those comments and address them.
Yeah, I think that's that's wonderful. I would encourage, you know, just as someone who's done a lot of public comments herself in her day job, consider also having a phone number, just because, you know, there's still a good amount of the population that doesn't have email or internet access. And again, just making sure that we have that, you know, a wide range of ability for our engagement moving forward. And one of the things I noticed in the report was that there were either supplemental materials or eleven additional comments that had been submitted during the conferral process and that they would be online. But I am having difficulty finding those. So if you could help me get that, I think that would be great. Because I would like to read everything that's being submitted. I think it's a good thing to have an idea of what's being said and continuously. So if those do get updated throughout the process, just having that publicly available website, I just kind of wanted to fly that out. I'll be reading it. I want to read everything. And I I thank the public for for submitting comments and hope to see more.
Yeah, thank you. It's definitely online, actually at the bottom, right next to where we have the publish the conferral report right next to it is the supplemental information. I'll send you a snapshot pointing to it. Great.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And then
Keep going. Yeah, why don't you keep moving?
Yep, next slide, please. So looking forward to twenty twenty four. And here we the plan is to incorporate our expanded authority ability and look at, you know, leverage, deep assessments and analysis to attack the most vital areas of the decarbonization journey. As you can see, with preserved hydro power, we're looking at the Great Lakes forecasting to have to improve our to improve and refine our generation and hydro forecasting model. We're issuing reports from our learnings from the North Country Battery Storage that Justin mentioned earlier. We're going to do additional studies on the to identify potential transmission needs. Now, those are project like, like Justin said, we have a wealth of understanding around sort of the needs and capabilities of the transmission system. But the but you need to develop that and you need to invest in sort of in building out those assessments. Additional projects. And, you know, we talked about all the major major drivers of decarbonization, also school bus electrification. That school bus electrification program is also going to be an important and vital program of, you know, cutting down emissions. And and I think it'd be great for students to actually see it on their buses as as they go. And then finally, we're going to reinvest more in reimagine the canal. Specifically, like we know that with climate change, we see an increase aquatic invasive species and up additional flooding. So these are all sort of plans and priorities to address that, including the earth and embankment integrity program. Right? But we're not just going to stop and rest on what we've done in twenty three and in twenty and what we plan to do, what our current plans are for twenty four. We're not, we don't have blinders on. Next slide. We have, we're also invested right now in looking at Vision twenty thirty and undergoing a comprehensive refresh. Right? I don't like our mission and vision are strong and we and and well thought out. But the organization, we we can't, we've got to ensure that we keep that they're they apply to the ever changing world. I think the theme that was talked about very much today is how much things are changing in the energy land state. And this is how we how we ensure that we can stay a step ahead and we can lead. I'm more than happy to take any questions right now, but that's our
Refresh process, talk a little bit more about that.
Sure.
Obviously. Go ahead.
Sure. So we, under the vision of our new Chief Innovation Officer, we're adding in a collaborative and participatation or a participation approach. And that what that really involves is reaching out both internally and externally and getting everyone's perspective on sort of the state of the current market and where it's going to figure out where to figure out where we are best capable of being additive to the process. And this is sort of, and one of the things that I'm most looking forward to is by bringing in not only the people that are around this table and having conversation with them, but bringing in high potential young talent from around the organization to, to, to address these concerns.
Or other subject matter experts, et cetera. What we do and so, and what's our timeline to do that?
Yeah.
What's our project plan to do?
All throughout 2024 and we're trying, we, the plan is the parallel. Parallel the renewables strategic plan, right? Cause they have to be done in collaboration with one another. So it's building on that, building on those insights is to incorporate into the vision 2030 refresh to keep, make sure we're in sync.
Okay. So I mean, obviously renewables needs to be part and parcel of the broader strategic plan. So we have, we'll have an integrated plan come the end of 24. Is that your timeline?
That's exactly right. We'll have an integrated plan by the end of 2024, specifically in, in, in October, November, around when you normally look at the budget. So you're seeing all of the investments that we're making with the dollars that are associated with that.
So give us a refreshed update for the balance of this decade as we crystal ball it at that point in time.
That's right.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for your update today. Vision 2030 is, you know, is responsive to the moment, is responsive to the citizens of New York. Would ask, you have it on one of your pages, lead transmission. There's hundreds of jobs that are going to be created through this, through this plan. Wherever we can pull that out to demonstrate to, you know, citizens of New York, taxpayers of New York, that this is, you know, this is the evolution, this is the renewables future, this sustainability. But there's thousands and thousands of jobs that are going to be created as we do each of these, each of your strategic buckets here. So I just think it's, I mean, you have it on the transmission slide, but it's going to be across the board. As we upgrade hydro, it's, you know, a generation, there's, there's tons of local jobs being created in New York State.
Yeah, that's great. And that's another side of the economic engine and driver for NIPA.
Any other questions, thoughts for Eve?
Louis, you stole my question.
Laurie.
Last one, I also had that question. So thank you, Louis and Cecily. Going back to EVOL New York, it made complete sense when, you know, NIPA partnered with Stuart Shops. For anyone in the upstate area, it's just, it's, it's a perfect match. Are there any other plans for more charging stations in specific areas, new partnerships? Or anything that you can kind of give us an update on as we head into 2024?
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's interesting. The electric vehicle market has, has been transformed, right? Like with the, with new technology and sort of new people coming into the space. But I think that the, the original desire about sort of ensuring addressing range anxiety persists, and that's what we've been doing. So the plan is to continue to address range anxiety. Continue to build out public charging stations so that you can get from the bottom of the state to the top of the state and across using an electric vehicle. Yeah.
I might also add that we're working closely with DOT on utilizing the NEVI money to fill, to fill in the remaining gaps in the heavily traveled corridors. And so we've been tapped by the state to play that role and it's already underway.
Yeah, we were actually the, one of the, as Justin knows, we were one of the first organizations that actually were able to use the NEVI funding. So we're, we're pushing and we're leading.
Just one last comment. It's been, it's been a distinct pleasure for all of the four new trustees to be part of the, part of NIPA over the last six months. And I, you know, one of my takeaways, and it ties into Vision 2030, is that New York State is actually leading across the country and, and sustainability and renewables. So wherever we can pull that out as well, our, our leadership across, not only in Northeast, but across the country. I think it's helpful for New York citizens to know that and appreciate that. Because these are, these are massive investments in, in, in how New York State is going to move forward. And, and the state should be applauded for that.
As I say, it's all in the results, you know? You gotta focus on what results, you know, you deliver. So we'll take credit, we'll take credit for the outcomes and ensure we're duly recognized. Appreciate that. All right, Eve, thanks very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to participating in the refresh and evolving process. Thank you. All right, we'll pivot a little bit to risk. As we've chatted before. The world's increasingly challenging, at times dangerous place and how we manage and navigate the risks and challenges to put in front of us and convert those to opportunities and ensure we can play as much offense while we're playing defense, a little bit of a discussion. Eric will catch us up first on the cyber front and then Alexis will talk a little bit broader in terms of overall risk management. So Eric, welcome back.
Thank you. Challenging and exciting all at the same time. Thank you, trustees, NIPA team, members of the public. With me today is, I just want to introduce some of the senior leaders in our team that have joined us here in the room. Senior Director Victor Costanza, who is the Deputy CISO and Senior Director Dan Wasley, who runs our security operations team. They've been instrumental in some of the transformation that we've done over the last year. Since we last spoke to you, we have continued on this journey to really harden our environment and make it more difficult for adversaries to penetrate and move around. And recall, last year, we spoke to you about a program called, it was rethinking our entire architecture. We talked about micro segmentation, which was compartmentalizing your environment, making it very difficult to hop around. And at the end of that discussion, he said, well, what's next? Cause this is all built around that concept of zero trust that we hear so much around and some of the forthcoming regulations and executive orders. And so this year, we delivered the next phase of that program. And that's probably been the most fundamental shift in how we manage our security, probably since this program started. And it's touched every user within NIPA. It's fundamentally changed how our users access our systems within our environment and in the cloud. So basically changed to how the network plumbing works, given us a great, great level of resilience. We've continued to invest heavily in our security operations, our hunters and killers, to be able to detect these things when they do get into our environment. But we know we've got to keep ahead of these threats. You know, if we're all using all of the same tools and all of the same capabilities, we'll never be, you can never really be better than ever, better than average. So we've got to think about those novel cybersecurity technologies, the emerging ones that the bad guys haven't looked at or figured out ways to get around yet. So we'll be introducing some of those within the next year, actually. We'll probably be the first in the utility sectors to deploy some of those things. And we recognize that our remit goes beyond us. You know, we're trying to help our customers to protect the greater utility system across New York states. We have a program that we've talked to you in the past about called the Cyber Collected Defense Consortium. That's tough to get off the tongue, the CCDC. Where we're taking our knowledge and skills and know-how, helping our customers learn to protect themselves. When you visited Fairport and back in the September meeting, they're one of our participants in this program. And so we're helping them to improve their cybersecurity posture. Looking ahead, we're going to continue. We've actually refreshed our strategy around these three, three themes. You know, we recognize that given our role in the, in the utility sector, we're an attractive target for cyber adversaries. So we have to have industry leading detection and response. What that means is, you know, most cybersecurity programs are based around gathering intelligence from others, looking for those hits in your environment and then responding to them. If your program is centered on that mindset, it means you're really good at detecting yesterday's threats. And if we're an attractive target, we've got to have the capability to detect the things that no one has ever seen before. We'll be providing intelligence back to the community. And that's been the big pivot that we've made over the last year in our security operations area. I'll talk to you a little more about that in a minute. We know that with our expanded remit around renewables, how we think about our operating ROT environments versus the just an IT environment. Those boundaries are going to be challenged. We're going to have to figure out how we enable those things in a way that we're able to design security into them so that we're not holding up those projects. And that's kind of where this enablement theme comes in. Get that risk balance innovation so that we're not delaying the time to value for those new initiatives. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some of the, some of the numbers behind all this. Cause we talked about programs and things, if we move to the next slide, just. And pardon my, my, my graphics. I was trying to show a funnel, but we're really trying to show how some of these, some of these metrics really narrow down to some, some actionable things within our team. Just wanted to kind of paint a picture of some of the stuff that we have to deal with every day. We hear a lot about phishing, people throwing malicious emails to us. Well, every day, and these are November actuals, but typical, they're typically within that range. In a given month, NIPA gets about three million emails addressed to it. And of that, almost two thirds are automatically filtered out as spam, phishing, malicious server by the automated tools, using the knowledge that everybody else has, all those indicators or, or intelligence that we've talked about in the past. Even after that, we still have our, our users will report to us, say, hey, I got this email that looks kind of suspicious. And we'll get about 5,000 of those a month. And it really speaks to the value of the education and awareness that we've made across NIPA. Our folks are very suspicious. A few weeks ago, Adam actually just sent us one that he received that was very suspicious and actually no one had ever seen before. So it was a great example for how this works. After we go through all that filtering, filtering in a given month, you know, we'll see 10, 12, you know, 20 of these things are really malicious, really targeted at us. That we're, so again, our, our team is focusing on this stuff every day. The other side of the coin, I talked about all that threat intelligence that gets shared that everybody throws at us and we're all sharing in the community. You know, we get over four and a half million of these, these tidbits of information every month. And we'll see a sizable number, you know, typical month, 10, 20,000 of these things, people knocking on our doors, say, ah, these are these known bad things that are trying to hit us. And we'll even see some things where we may see things within our environment that look suspicious. He's, well, gee, does that mean they got in? No, not necessarily. It just speaks to the, the level of quality of some of the intelligence that's out there. So when you see this example here, we say 107 hits. That means something inside of NIPA was trying to talk to something that looked bad. And we, we've done a lot of investing, we will go in and investigate all these things. And what we'll typically find is that an adversary may have compromised, say, a website at Microsoft or Amazon or something that's sitting on a server with a lot of other websites that are legitimate. And they won't tell you that that's the particular website that may be bad. They'll just tell you that that server that's hosting hundreds of websites may be bad. But if we see somebody trying to talk to it, we've got to take a closer look at it. So our team has to investigate hundreds of these things in a given month or any given day. And again, this, this kind of speaks to the investments that we've had to make. So let's talk a little bit about our team and what we've done over the last year. So we've really bolstered our security operations capability. We bolstered it through automation and analytics and adding staff and training. And we've actually split the security operations team to what we call traditional security operations. These are the people that are running all the protective controls, making sure that they've got all of that intelligence in. And then we've created a new team, which we call the Cybersecurity Incident Response Team. They're what we call the hunters and killers. They're out there trying to figure out what these behaviors are that may look like somebody's in our environment, getting them eradicated, getting them contained. And we actually bolster that with a managed service from an external service provider to give us 24/7 coverage. This team over the last year, I think last year, they received 14 professional certifications in cybersecurity. And this year, I think we're on track for six to 10 more. So we are continuing to invest heavily in this group. The important thing is they've got to have the knowledge and skills to be able to detect and hunt these things that have never been seen before. So that's part of the transition that we're continuing with. And that was my brief update. Any questions?
So for the layperson. What's the, the risk level today or how has that progressed over the last 12 months? And you're reassuring us that we're at least if not more than keeping pace. But give me some context for, you know, where the world is today versus where we found ourselves a year ago sitting.
So I will distinguish between the, the risk level and the threat level. The threat level is ever increasing. More and more people want to do us harm and more and more people have access to the tools that it takes to cause us harm. You know, it used to be that you had a well-funded, state-sponsored actors to throw some of the most sophisticated cyber threats in our organization. Today, those threat actors have figured out how to monetize their trade crap. So you can go out and buy that as a service. So if you wanted to go out and launch a ransomware attack on an organization like NIPA, you might not need any technical skills at all. You can go buy it as a service. And the people that run that service, well, they make their money by just collecting their share of the ransom. So those tools and capabilities have become widely democratized. So it's magnified the amount of the threat landscape that's out there. To that end, we've had to keep pace with that and keep ahead of it. So that keeps the risk level commensurate. So again, we, we've maintained a commensurate level of risk, probably actually lowered our risk, particularly with some of these investments we've made.
Well, that's, that's a punchline. So you feel our, if anything, we've reduced our level of risk in spite of an increased level of threat?
Yes.
So from a board standpoint, you're suggesting we can feel all the more comfortable in spite of comfortable, maybe, you know, poor choice of words, but our anxiety level, our anxiety level isn't any higher in spite of that increased level of threat.
It's, you know, I'm never comfortable because the work is. But yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Well, kudos.
Thank you. Thanks for the team.
The bad guys are. That's all, that's all we hear about. That's all you read about, you know, or what's happening. So other questions for Eric, specific to cyber before we jump to Alexis and. All right, great. Thank you very much, Eric. Appreciate the efforts, Vic, Danny, the team. Great work. And kudos and keep going. Alexis, welcome.
Good.
Your first time at the podium, I think, right? An official, official NIPA welcome. So.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, Chairman, trustees, colleagues and the public, except is it still morning? Yeah. I think I'm getting in in time, right? Great, excellent. So maybe just a little bit of context before I begin. In my role, I see.
Introduce yourself first, introduce yourself.
Yes. So Alexis Harley, Chief Risk and Resilience Officer. In my role, I'm responsible to oversee several activities, helping to protect and preserve the value of this company and help to ensure delivery of the strategy to the customers and communities we serve. So I look after the management of market credit, operational and also enterprise risk. That's the ones that we bring up to the top level. It's also about increasing business resiliency. And these, these are along the spectrum, so they dovetail very nicely together. But finally, also, my team is responsible to help promote sustainability in our practices. And that's to help advance our ESG performance, something very important to us and helping us to be compliant with and align with EO 22 and some of the other legislation.
And before you get going, just a little bit more on yourself. You joined us first of September after career. And so maybe just talk to you and, you know, that, what you're bringing to us.
Absolutely. So I've been here a whole three months, very excited. I come, I've been in the energy industry my entire career. Most recently, I come to NIPA from National Grid. I have obviously extensive risk management experience, but I also have experience in compliance management. My degree is in engineering, so engineering project management, strategic planning, internal consultancy and customer operations. So in this role, what I was looking forward to bringing to NIPA was not just an excitement and a passion for risk management, but to kind of bring that broader context around our industry into the thinking that my team will do to help support the business, thinking through some of the uncertainties that we face as our industry evolves. I will also go on to say that for me, risk, risk is just uncertainty. And that's what we're facing now in unprecedented levels. So risk itself is neither good nor bad. It's the impacts and the outcomes that can have positive or negative impacts on a business or on strategic delivery. So, so trying to keep that in mind and bringing some of that in the work that we're doing for resiliency, which is taking that forward look. It's the part of the business that brings in emerging risk thinking, sustainability, which is looking at our impact on communities, societies, the environment. These can all come together really nicely if we have the teams working synergistically together. Was that helpful? Okay, great. Any questions? Sorry, hopefully not on that. So now if we can move to the first slide, please. Again, being here just about 90 days, almost 100, which would have been so cool. I can summarize my impressions into three general buckets of observations. So with regard first to processes and practices related to sustainability, risk and resilience. I find no major gaps at NIPA. So there's a really good breadth and depth of the knowledge and services provided. You have a very risk-aware culture, which is a real key tenet of helping to make sure the conversations happen in the business. You have a very engaged board and executive level support behind this. Well-established governance practices, which make sure that we're routinely visiting and giving the airtime and the consideration needed to uncertainties. And then finally, but to me, most important, high business engagement. So I see that across NIPA and canals. Risk is a contact sport. So a high level of interaction between your risk SMEs and your business SMEs is really critical to making sure that we're getting the inputs and the insights needed to help us frame considerations for decision-making. And the risk resilience and sustainability insights that we can bring in working with the business will help us to frame how we look at decision-making and consider the trade. Will help us to frame how we look at decision-making and consider the trade-offs. Second observation around the team. So. The team that I have in place right now is highly experienced. With a deep knowledge in risk resilience and sustainability focus areas. So that's really key. It's really ha- great to see that we don't really have a particular gap in getting resources in to help us address some of these topics. Really important to me, they demonstrate such a passion for what they do. And a real commitment to utilizing their services to help NIPA deliver on its vision and mission. And especially to keep a focal point around the communities that we serve. My step zero coming in a CRO was though to help focus on building a sense of team across these four different units. So we have a market and credit risk team that are really focused on our hedging programs, looking at the volatility of markets, thinking about our credit exposures. We have a classic, you know, ERM and operational risk team looking at the. Basic risks that we face and having an asset-based business. And then we have the sustainability organization, which is a bit newer in general in our industry. That is also looking at how we're addressing items related to climate, waste, air and water quality. Our foray into electric vehicles and how we're looking at energy efficiency in our buildings. Bringing them together, however, I think could yield some more synergistic opportunities in how we approach working with the business. So the business needs to take time to have these conversations, to help us work through, looking at different scenarios to help. Rate and impacts and rate the the potential. Probabilities of risk events or resilience events occurring. And so. Working more closely together, trying to streamline and simplify our approaches and practices, going to the business once to ask all the key questions. Helps preserve some value for them, really makes better use of their time. But then we can also think holistically about some of the. Corresponding or correlated impacts that might occur. So that'll be a next step that I'll be looking to take with the team. I also see some opportunities to streamline how we work with partner organizations like internal audit. That also has a risk-based audit plan and has conversations with the business from a different lens. And it's also around working really closely with the the business controls team. To help make sure that we're taking steps to put in place certain of the mitigations that they can provide advisement on. Doing this, I think, will just be better, will be more effective if we're more streamlined and we can get time to value for our outputs a little bit quicker. The third observation I like to make would be how I was thinking about how and where NIPA might advance in its maturity. And its risk resilience and sustainability practices. And I might summarize that by saying that. I truly believe it will be evolution, not revolution. Again, seeing that you have great practices and a strong team, to me, it'll be about prioritizing actions. It will be more about getting risk resilience and sustainability thinking more at the forefront. Traditionally, these teams are usually used after a decision is made to say, oh, hmm, what are the impacts this thing that we just decided? In this case, working more closely with Eve and his team as they're looking at the strategy refresh. Working closely with Phil and his team as they're thinking about potential projects and partners that we'll be going into with renewables. Can help bring some of that framework a little bit forward. Looking at your trade-offs, looking at your risks and your opportunities, your potential threats and opportunities holistically before you make a decision. Very helpful. So I think it's about the last thing, sorry, I just wanted to mention was we've already started to put in place a framework. And some practices around emerging risk. So that will be really key. We've already talked. A lot about how our industry has been changing, staying on the forefront of that and the rapidity with which things are moving. It's going to be really important to stay on top of. That does help us bring to our attention some of the items that are under development. And how we might have to consider our practices or or even adjust some of our strategies. And that's the area, the emerging risk area is probably the one with the highest potential for considering. How to frame risk from an opportunity lens. So one example of that I might share would be as we're looking at artificial intelligence, right? Early thinking has been around, how do we mitigate risks? How do we anticipate what could potentially go wrong or might might be threatening to us? However, in working with Rob and his team and Daniela and her team, we should also be stepping back to think about. If we put in responsible use of IA, AI practices, sorry, IA also, but but artificial intelligence, flip my acronym, apologies. We could look at how it could be beneficial to our business. How could it maybe help us do some analysis to get ahead of some of the thinking? And also use it to do correlations to understand different impacts that can cascade together, whether positively, negatively, or whether they net out. So they're great opportunities here to bring some of that emerging risk, keep an eye on it, and then see how it may or may not impact us under different scenarios. That's an awful lot, but I promised us three observations to start. Any questions about what I've shared?
Oh. Thank you.
Excellent. Can we go quickly through the next two slides? Perfect. Okay, so. In this, our look back and our look ahead, I'm not going to drain the slide, but. It is a testament to the strength of the teams that I just mentioned to have accomplished these deliverables. Even despite the change in leadership that they faced. So there was a time where they had some interims. They were under Adam's leadership, looking after them for some time, but they were without this role fulfilled for quite a. Quite a few months. And so to be able to do this during transition. No, not at all, not at all. So I'll just highlight a few of the highlights just in the context of some things that we're going to be taking forward into our next steps. So number one, enhanced reports that the operational and ERM team put together. That makes risk analyses more understandable. And also more useful. So sometimes when you're in a support organization, you do a lot of great analysis. And then you hand it off and nobody knows what to do with it. Great, thanks. They put it on their shelf. In this case, I think the team took great strides to try to simplify some of the outputs and help have the conversations with the business about what it means and how it could be actioned. I'd like to mention that we have been increasing our capabilities in terms of managing credit exposure. And that will be really important again, as we look at renewables, projects and partners, to keep that in mind. Setting up general frameworks for resilience and emerging risk, which I've mentioned, so I won't repeat more. And then, of course, really important with the sustainability team, the progress on the leading by example programs to help support EO twenty two. That was multi-dimensional, it impacted our look at buildings, our look at fleet, our look at waste audits and our look at. Land stewardship and water stewardship. So again, all components we can bring forward to share with the business. To me, all of this is around starting to start the framework to help NIPA retain and maintain its viability. For the next slide, you can go really quickly for highlights for our goals for twenty twenty four. Again, not to go through all the items, but. The commonalities across them are that this now will be where we're taking our next steps to increase our maturity. We actually have engaged with a third party who is giving a maturity analysis of the risk program. We are also getting some external view into our emerging risk program and how we might change it to be good or even best practice. And we'll have to weigh that carefully because sometimes best practice is not always the goal we're shooting for. Needs to be reasonable and within our remit and makes sense for our company. So we'll be looking to have those maturity assessments, help us frame some more details about the specific work that we'll do in twenty four and twenty five. And then we will be bringing this to the risk and resilience committee at its inaugural meeting in February. Can't wait, so excited. Next steps really here are all just about, again, trying to bring things more together, looking at things like scenario analysis. Correlations of risks and drivers and emerging risks. But then again, even more so, aligning better within my team, the skill sets and capabilities for that synergistic value. And then working better across teams. Again, works really good, but there's always ways to improve and streamline. And a good example of this will be in terms of the work we're doing around analyzing climate change. We can put that in the context of the wider resilience framework to have a broader conversation with operations. And also keep in mind some of the insights we get from the emerging risk analyses that we get from third parties. So with that, I will end by just saying, I think it's an exciting time for NIPA. And that it's really right now well-positioned to help leadership making decisions. Better by navigating through some of the uncertainties and by considering the opportunities in check.
Excellent.
Thank you. Questions?
Questions, thoughts, Alexis? No, thank you very much, very comprehensive. Again, welcome to NIPA. We look forward to your leadership. We look forward to working with you at the committee level. It's a reconstituted group. Merging our cyber and, you know, old risk orientations and as you said, exciting, challenging times. And look forward to what you and the team will continue to bring and ensure we navigate and thread that needle, you know, consistently as opportunistically as possible.
Thank you.
Yep, terrific. Thanks very much, Alexis. Okay. Strategy, risk, next up, operations. Joe, generation, transmission and. Customers and canals and all that. Just a few extra things here and there.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, trustees, the public, the staff. I may be the first to wish you a good afternoon. Go right to the next slide, please. Next one, please. So I just want to touch on just a quick highlight from twenty twenty three, actually, from operations perspective. And one of the things that we really focused on this year. That you'll see here is tying together all the things that you just heard about that the chairman just mentioned around strategy. The enabling authority that we have now. And and bringing it together and making sure that the staff at the operational level understands the impacts of what that means to us and what we need to do to deliver. The theme is really going to be about delivering going forward as I talked about going forward. So we got together. Right here in the Jaguar room from across all the regions, brought everybody here, brought subject matter experts in from.
The Jaguar room?
Our Jaguar downstairs, yeah.
Oh, upstairs, yeah.
No, this is this is our boardroom. I think it used to be a Jaguar dealership. That's the rumor, right? That's what it was. So down there. But yeah, so we still call it the Jaguar room. And basically tried to translate all that information that we've been learning about here today to the staff. And make sure they understand how things are going to change for them, where we need to upscale, where we might need other resources. And what it's going to take for the staff that's already supporting some of this work that Phil Toya and Benella are bringing our way and expanding those competencies. So we did learn a lot. It was a very, a good conversation to understand, put context around that for the staff. And to put together a plan going forward with the support of Karina and HR on developing staff, upskilling staff. Getting resources where needed and increasing staff where needed to do that. All with the customer in mind, making sure we're delivering for for the stakeholders of New York. Next slide, please. So all that said, what it really monitor kind of looking forward is we're really going to focus heavily on continuing our asset management strategy. We have a lot of physical assets in place that are are going to have to operate quite differently, a little bit more robustly, a little bit more variably. And as you know, and you've approved a number of these projects going forward around transmission, life extension and modernization, next gen Niagara and so forth. Next year's theme is going to be delivering these projects and make sure we're positioned from a physical asset perspective to 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 have these resources work properly. As renewables come online, as transmission is developed. And the feedback loop that continuously goes in between when renewables come in and what transmission has to be developed. Then back to where renewables can be put in because of that. So there's a lot of feedback loops in this. So this is just a list of projects that are we're really going to be focusing on and delivering for our portfolio. In twenty twenty three, we were very successful in managing our budget. We're going to be reporting that at year ends. But we're on track to be really on budget and on schedule for a number of different projects and the overall portfolio. Even as we had to adjust for some of the constraints that we had to support the business services and and their goals and capital expenditures as well. So with that said, we're going to continue to focus on that and put mechanisms in place to manage the risk. Do more reliability-based maintenance and start to adjust our staff to to the the new paradigm of what we're going to have to deliver for them, the the state at large. Next slide, please. So we we talked about a lot of the numbers here. This is what we're doing from a customer perspective. We're really going to be focused on targeting eighteen thousand metric tons of GHD reductions next year. And and I won't, you know, as Alexis said, kind of like read through the entire slide, but just listing a few projects in each category here. That are going to help us reach those goals in twenty four that we're going to put our focus. So you'll see night John here. On energy efficiency and e-mobility, we're having some really good opportunities with some of the state university system, especially New York EV charging. We are targeting seven hundred and twenty-five cumulative chargers. That's a hundred and thirty charges in twenty twenty four. Targeted for next year. And then as far as the. Distributed resources, we're targeting another eighty megawatts of cumulative solar installed. And focusing on JFK Long Island parking lot nine, which I always am near because that's near the Federal Circle Station where I'm constantly going back and forth. So it'd be great to see our resources there as well. Next slide, please. One more, please. Customer solutions. So. You know, the trustee Warren's questions around jobs and and resources, this is really what the impact has been in twenty twenty three in terms of economic development. So nearly a hundred customer awards and projects that you have approved that we've. Gotten into place that have resulted in three hundred over three hundred and fifty new jobs. And these are green jobs that we're talking about here. That represents twenty-six different industries across the state. And over twenty-six thousand jobs committing with fifty-four hundred new in twenty twenty-three. All that, of course, requires capital investment in these organizations and more than twenty-two billion dollars in capital investments have been committed as well as part of that. So it's very successful in twenty twenty-three as far as our 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 customer energy solutions.
That's not twenty-two billion of our dollars, that's twenty-two billion.
No, that's their dollars. That's that's incremental increase that they're investing in New York State because of our programs that inspire them to to locate and operate here. Thank you for that clarification question. Next slide, please. And we do it in style. We won't, we win awards. Here's one that we had the APPA Smart Energy Award here that was presented at SEPA. That's a smart energy provider designation that we've received. And there's a few people in the room here that are on here, but you'll see Lizzie Holly receiving that the ICP designation from the APPA staff. Just demonstrating again what a trusted resource we are and also what a cross collaborative effort it is when we're dealing with our customers. Sustainability group collaborating with finance and legal and everybody else to make sure that we're we're doing the best we can for our customers here. So congratulations to your entire organization that she's accepted that on their behalf. Next slide, please. A voice to the customer, we we listen. One of the things that we're very proud of is we do outreach out to our customers and try to get feedback into, you know, how are we serving them? How do they see us? And we have an overall target to maintain ourselves in the first quartile of these. C stat sat scores, these survey scores for customer satisfaction. And our index, you know, our our the national average for all the people that serve the industries that we serve is a score of seven hundred and fifty-four. And we're at seven seventy-five, never satisfied, but we are in the top quartile. And we're very proud that we're also in the first quartile of electric utilities and the eastern east in the quartile in the east region, but number one in the state. So we're very happy and proud of that as well.
Fantastic.
Next slide, please. And this, I wanted to present this slide as just a little bit of a context of of kind of the diversity when we're dealing with our key accounts. We don't just take a narrow focus and just think about one program. Here's a, here's a situation where we're dealing with the New York State, New Jersey Port Authority. And 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 our D our DER advisory services, e-mobility and charging stations, just. But the vehicles themselves, the ground transportation devices for. You see all the luggage moving around, it's all electrified. Bus charging stations and then, of course, just evolve for the the customers that are parking long-term and throughout the region. But we leverage all those things and use our key account managers and and to deal with our customers so that they have one face of the organization. And that that's going to really be leveraged going further with Vanilla doing work in Phil's group on renewables because they may have some interest in doing that as well. But we have a very tight relationship with NIPA Development and the key account managers to make sure that our customers see all the. The menu of services that we can provide. And this was a slide just to show you that, you know, here's one customer leveraging several of those mechanisms. Next slide, please. On to Canal Corporation, some exciting news there as well. You move right to the next slide, please. Just some highlights, some of them you heard about already, Justin talked about them, but we had Medina, which is a very. Very, if you haven't had a chance in Western New York to go to Medina, it's right between Rochester and Buffalo, a very beautiful community. But we actually had this multi-phase based project that's leveraging additional funding from RLC Wilson Foundation. To really rehabilitate the the area with this art triennial and to to make it a more vibrant waterfront that's more welcoming and safe. Where people are coming to visit there, the Empire State Trail does traverse right right through the town on that area along the canals. And we want people to be drawn to these kinds of communities. And this is just an example that we're we're using to to demonstrate that there's more to come here. And you'll be hearing about some of these throughout the year. They happen fast and some of our partners are are really this private funding kind of things that are so. Very supportive of this work because they're very tied to the communities. And we we continue to leverage that support of. And we, we continue to, to leverage that support of theirs to do that. We also are, are very focused on the infrastructure. As always, uh, we want to make sure that in terms of flood mitigation and mitigating any damage from to the, uh, the, the, this 200-year-old asset in some, in some places that we're, uh, we're paying attention to the capital investment on that as well. So we had this Glenns feeder canal project. I think some, uh, some people have visited that in the past, uh, doing preventative maintenance. That's a feeder that helps them with one of the highest, uh, points of our canal system feed the water there so we can traverse that. And, um, we did some of the, uh, lining on that, um, to prevent any, uh, sinkholes from, uh, occurring there as well. We're pounding water across the state and it's really on us to make sure that we're, we got the good infrastructure to keep the water where it belongs. And then we, uh, Justin touched a little bit on the, uh, Relent Earth and Embankment Project where with seepage, uh, we're using a soil bentonite slurry, which is kind of a, um, kind of pumped into the, 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 the embankment to prevent any seepage that we're seeing in the, in the raised area, which is in the western section of the canal system. And I believe there's actually a video at this point, um, that shows that. So you can go right to that, please. So basically what you're seeing is the mixing process. This is on top of one of the earth and embankments. So what you're seeing is there pumping this and mixing it. Uh, this is where it's a bentonite product that goes in. This is an innovative way if we don't usually have that, like, really entrenched area or in, in more, uh, trying to mitigate the last dry piles and stuff in the area. This is a way to kind of like plug the holes that are seeping through that earthen embankment through the depth of it. And it's an innovative way that's less disruptive, easier to restore. And then the, uh, the surrounding area is not as impacted in terms of, uh, view shed for people around it and so forth. It, it recovers much more quickly. So that methodology is something novel that we're, we're trying here. It seems to be working and we're going to continue to do that going forward.
What met expectations?
Met expectations. So it's kind of the cost savings, risk mitigation and, um, a novel technique to do it. And then the last slide was, I think we went past, but probably am I done? I, I just wanted to make you aware. You're always invited, but, uh, what we're also going to, uh, um, we're, we're doing, uh, continued fall and winter maintenance underway. Um, there's going to be a lot of work. I don't know if there's additional slide that maybe didn't make it, but there were some images, some of the pump out work. Yeah, if you have it. So yeah, this is just some of the pump out work that you can see. And you can see in the bottom right here to give you a little scale and individual down there inside the lock, uh, with a little bulldozer. It just gives you the scale of what we're, what we're dealing with and what, what kinds of things we deal with in the winter time. And, and the reason we do it in the winter is keep navigation all as long as we can in the summertime, uh, for all the economic development opportunities. So this is a very trying, um, process, very challenging. If you go out there, it's not in the best of conditions, but these folks are always out there willing to, uh, uh, do the dirty work to make sure that this asset's, uh, uh, working and beautiful during the summertime. So I just want to give them a shout out. You did. You did. And you're welcome. And Rebecca Hughes, who's probably listening online, but, uh, she's Deputy Executive Director there. She's more unhappy to host anybody that wants to visit these pump outs with Dave Mellon and that team. It is something to see and, uh, just dress warmly if I go out there. Um, and I believe, oh yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Couple of, uh, actually things to be, again, um, we do it with style. So we actually won, won a iconic lighting project that won a community building lighting award from, um, the lighting design awards. This LIT design awards are open to submissions and lighting manufacturers from around the world and, uh, selected by jury designers and leaders in lighting. Um, they have interior lighting, architectural fields and so forth. And what you're seeing here in top left is the Fairport Bridge, which you did get to visit, uh, earlier this year. I don't know if you got to see it at night, but the, the lighting was spectacular and they can change that thematically on, on whatever events they're having color-wise. Um, that Lockheed 17 at Little Falls is the bottom in the middle pictures. Again, it's another one that's quite visible, um, when you're, when you're driving in the area and it really, uh, uh, accentuates the, uh, the, the asset for the community. And then Verona Beach Lighthouse, which is, uh, there's markers on each side of the, uh, on Isle Lake and Verona Beach is one of them. Um, so just this iconic lighting has been, uh, uh, very helpful, not only in, in, uh, provide some security benefit and so forth, but really, uh, honors kind of like the architecture and the history of the, uh, the canal system as we're doing that. So, um, so that's, that's one program that we won awards on. And then we also won awards on fall fishing. Um, I think there's a slide on that too. No, no slide. No, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. It does say right here in my script that this is new. So some new news for you. Didn't make the slide submission, but ahead of this year's fall fishing, this is breaking. Uh, New York State Tourism Industry Association presented the Canal Corporation and Orleans County with an award for excellence in tourism marketing in recognition for the tourism boost spurred by the fall fishing programs, more water, more fish program. Uh, but last week we learned the American Council of Engineering Companies will honor the Canal Corporation and HDR Engineering Consultant at their 2024 Engineering Excellence, uh, Awards Dinner in April with a diamond award for the fall fishing program as well and secret review. So the diamond award is the, the highest given by that organization. So we're very proud of that as well. Breaking news.
Well, great recap. Uh, what's up for 24? What's your, what are you going to do for an encore in 24?
We're just gonna, we're just gonna scale up. I think, honestly, I think like I said, the most important thing that we're trying to do is deliver for Phil, for the organization. Uh, we're very comfortable, very, uh, well postured for, uh, maintaining and, and, and operating our physical assets that exist today. That asset base is going to grow and it's going to be different. It's going to be stored. It's going to be renewables. It's going to be additional transmission lines. And even the technologies in those areas and the technologies that we're, we're, um, installing in next gen Niagara are going to be different. So continually working with labor, our partners in IBW, UWA, Puff and CSCA as well, on the canal side to make sure that they're upskilled, that they, they understand what's coming ahead of them, that the, uh, the support staff around them, the manager's staff is also trained and just focus on delivery in a safe and reliable way. Make sure everybody goes home safe, but make sure we get this done.
Great, great report. Great overview. Well done. Kudos to you and the 2000 strong who deliver it every day. Well, very well done.
Thank you.
Anything else for Jeff's, uh, Joe steps away?
Joe, you also have the best tie of anyone.
I did the holiday spirit early, but thank you for noticing. Happy holidays, everybody.
All right. Great job, Joe. Thank you. Kudos to you and your team. Uh, last like a stool. Make some money doing all that or enough money to enable us to continue to fund and finance where we're going. So Adam, give us a drive-by.
Sorry, you gotta pay for it all, right?
Yeah.
Somehow. Well, good morning, trustees, NIP staff members of the public. Um, we'll go through just an update where we are as through October. Next slide. Net income is 116 million against target of 84 million, um, running ahead of target. All areas seem to be doing well from an operating income standpoint, as well as the non-operating income. Generation was a little bit below, given prices being a little bit lower, but we've been able to make up a lot of that during the year. Transmission also down a little bit really because of, uh, we call fax revenues, has to do with revenues we would get from congestion in the system. So while we're not getting the revenues, it's a good sign that our projects are working because there's less congestion in the system. So it's actually, you know, indirectly a, a good thing. We just will have to, and we budgeted for that next year to be certainly lower. Nonutility revenues also ahead from mostly driven by the energy efficiency group, um, getting projects done on time and, um, moving those programs along very well. Um, operating expenses, again, my maintaining are, are in check and, uh, uh, most areas are on budget. Um, areas that are, that are under somewhere had to do with, uh, some of the benefits costs have come in a little bit under as well as we had the monetized funds expense here, which was money we would put into the monetized funds from doing better than the tariff rate, which this year did not do as well according to the tariff rate. So there was less money to put into that, but that actually resulted in a reduction of expenses as we show it here. Next slide, uh, just forecasting into the, uh, towards the end of the year. And what I would say is also we have November numbers in and it did a little bit better than budget, but November, December are typically not good months for us. Uh, things pick up again in January, but again, just tracking where we are for the rest of the year. We should, um, end up, you know, again, head of target mostly, a lot of it driven by non-operating side because of interest rates and returns on our investment portfolio, you know, significant increases in interest rates this year. You know, even doing nothing, you could have done a, a lot better in terms of interest income. What we've tried to do is take the opportunity to try to extend out our portfolio so that we can be protected in terms of higher yielding securities when interest rates eventually go lower. We're obviously projecting interest rates to go lower next year. We're looking at as many as maybe four rate cuts, pricing in 100 basis points of reduction next year. So we're trying to position ourselves, uh, for that. So protect that income and also look for opportunities to save on, on interest expense as well. So with that, we will then go to, if no other questions, we'll just go to, we, uh, the annual budget approval process. So we went through this in great detail at the finance committee meeting and certainly a lot of preparation up before that. So I'll just try to hit some of the high notes. Next slide. Um, really just guiding the financial planning process around our strategic priorities, outcomes and benefits, both financially, environmentally, uh, for the community as well. So trying to make sure that, you know, our financial structure is aligned towards achieving strategic initiatives and making sure that we can execute on these plans and provide all those, uh, benefits. Next slide. Our capital plan by 3.1 billion over four years, significant showing the breakout between whether it be the canal's, um, headquarters, generation, transmission. So significant growth over those next four years. And as well in the canals area as well, in terms of the amount of work that, you know, Joe was referring to that has to be done there. So, um, looking forward to making sure that we can secure as much funding as we can from that, from other sources outside of NIP as well, whether it be, uh, federal grants or other opportunities from other partners in the state. Looking forward to trying to, um, make sure that we have as much as we can, uh, to provide that infrastructure, uh, for the canals. The four-year forecast for net interest in, for net income is provided here as well as for EBITDA and cash flow. This is what we'll generate over the next year. Uh, while we're making more money, the idea is that, that cash flow helps to fund and pay for the, uh, capital plan. So trying to bring together both the balance sheet and the income statement on the next slide is sort of a sources and uses, uh, table that shows, you know, between the cash we have, the cash we generate, what we have to spend on capital operations, uh, what we have to borrow. And basically showing that while we have all this, uh, you know, good growth and steady growth in income, we're able to use that and commit it to that capital plan of 3.1 billion that we showed earlier. So this is how that money gets all deployed. Uh, next slide. As far as operating expenses, you know, for the most part, we're able to hold the line and keep it within, uh, at or below the rate of inflation. So expenses have been able to be kept somewhat in line, uh, with those expectations. You know, there was some movement between operating expenses and purchase power because of the reclassification of the A2 lease. So it looks a little bit lower than it is, but still overall spending is, you know, within that rate of inflation growth. So also that, you know, goes to the benefit for our customers, make sure our rates stay competitive. Um, and with that, we'll go to the next slide where what we're requesting for approval today is for the, um, approval of the four-year financial plan, the approval of, uh, the posts on the website and distribution to all the state entities and for the O and M budget for the Power Authority. It's capital budget, the energy services budget and the separately financed projects, O and M budget as well as the Canal Corp's, uh, budget for O and M and capital. Um, any questions? Otherwise I would just.
In support of, uh, those approvals. Thank you, Dennis. Second, thank you, Louis. Uh, all in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Great job, Adam, as always.
Thanks. Next, uh, we have another. Yes, we have another item here. This is just for, uh, for the trustees to authorize a release of funds. It says here for any lawful purpose, uh, we're asking for a release of up to $120 million, uh, so that we could utilize that to optimize balance sheet in terms of, um, our, our debt and finding opportunities. We believe between now and the next month or so to perhaps, you know, to refinance some of our, um, some outstanding debt. So in order to do that, we need to have the release. And what the release means is that in consideration of the release, you know, we meet all of our metrics targets after that release, uh, in consideration thereof. So, uh, I can say that we will with that and hopefully we'll have that, um, flexibility to, um, take advantage of any opportunities we see come our way.
I guess my takeaway here is just creates optionality for you as you just said, flexibility gives you additional arrows in your quiver to most opportunistically manage the balance sheet. Couple minutes, finance committee, we've got other release of funds. This just broadens that.
Yes.
To enable that, correct?
That's correct.
So I think everyone's been brought up to speed on opportunities there. So if there's any other questions, I'd ask for a motion to authorize the release of funds as Adams requesting. Dennis, thank you again. Louis, thank you again. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you very much and appreciate all the help from staff and everybody. Thank you.
Well done. Well done. Great reports, one and all. Uh, again, speaks volumes of, uh, the tremendous work, uh, that all of you are doing. Strategic alignment, balancing that risk and reward, uh, equation operationally, uh, just delivering great outcomes and, uh, doing that with the benefit of, uh, strong financial performance and most importantly, our ability to continue to leverage and, and fund and finance, uh, the opportunities we have. Most importantly, the expanded authority and the ability to lean in and, uh, lead with real strength and conviction, uh, there. So, uh, kudos and round of applause, one and all for great job in 23. Look forward to even more in 24. No time to rest on your laurels. Catch your breath over the holidays and make sure you're back at it. Reporting for duty on Tuesday, January 2nd. All right, uh, just referenced, we've had, uh, a couple, uh, committees, uh, since we last together, uh, a couple of months ago. One of those, uh, was finance, uh, committee, uh, that met, uh, just about a month ago today. Uh, the outcomes of, uh, that lengthy discussion, debate and dialogue were, uh, five specific recommendations that ringing forward, uh, to us as a board today. We met obviously as a committee of the whole. So just to refresh everyone's memory, uh, similar to our last, uh, approval, recommending that we authorize the release of up to 27 million in support, uh, for operations of, uh, the canals. That's our quarterly, uh, release. We authorize, uh, up to an amount of 30 million over the next five years, uh, to support nine program control services, uh, contracts as we typically do authorize a pool of funds, basket of funds that can be utilized with, uh, approved vendors and, and the like on an as-needed or as-appropriate, uh, basis, uh, that we also authorized a, uh, unique one-shot, uh, $2 million change order. Uh, Joe mentioned the Guy Park Manor rehabilitation project. So we've, uh, recommended approval for an additional 2 million to cover incremental costs there. Um, 20 million in funding for the implementation of the municipal and rural cooperative electric utilities, electric drive vehicle program, otherwise known as the MRC E-E-D-E-V-U. Oh, no. And, uh, the continued use of the purchase power adjustment charge. And then lastly, um, authorized, uh, similar to the previous item, an additional 22 and a half million over the next five years, uh, to, uh, potentially 14 asset management, uh, and implementation services contracts. So, um, with hopefully that quick refresher, if I can have a motion, uh, to adopt these aforementioned items, be that. Thank you very much. A second. Dennis, uh, appreciate that. Uh, any other questions? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. And then, uh, we started our day with a robust and energetic, uh, audit committee, uh, meeting, chaired by, uh, Mr. Trainer. So Dennis, a recap if you would.
Okay. Thank you, John. Uh, the audit committee met earlier today and adopted minutes from the March 22nd, 2023 Audit Committee Meeting. The committee also received a report from Angela Gonzalez on the 2023 internal audit plan update and adopted the 2024 internal audit budget at this meeting. In addition, APMG presented their audit plan and strategy for the 2023 financial audit to the audit committee for consideration for following two items and now before. Oh my goodness, time to start all over. There are two items, uh, there are two items before the trustees for adoption. One, the approval and adoption of the New York Power Authority and Canal Corporation's Audit Committee Charter. Two, the approval and adoption of the New York Power Authority Internal Audit Charter. Two, the approval and adoption of the New York Power Authority Internal Audit Charter. Corporate Policy five dash one. I now ask for a motion to adopt these two items.
Michael, thank you very much. Motion, Louis, second. Thank you. Any questions of Dennis on any of that? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Anything else Ryan about Tommy DeVito and the Giants are coming back? They're still in the mix.
Super Bowl, we're all going.
Get your tickets early. You're organizing the tour, right?
I am.
You got the bus, all right? Johnny's in down there. He's fired up. Okay. We're good to go. Bills, we'll see you there.
Wide right.
Come on, that's a real cheap shot. I mean, this is a time of celebration. I mean, come on. Scotty Norwied, you know, infamous. All right, lastly, that moves us forward to our consent agenda. Everyone's had an opportunity to review. A reasonable volume of material there for us peruse. I'm sure everyone's appropriately done that. And I'd ask for, unless there's any questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve. So Dennis, you lead the league in motions today. Thank you very much. Michael, second. All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. And with that, unless there's any other matters to come before us. I'm pleased to ask for a motion to adjourn. We will next be back together February sixth. And a lot to do, certainly over the next two months, but a great way to end. So a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Dennis, let you close this out in honor of Tommy DeVito. Michael, second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Happy holidays, everyone. Happy New Year. Thanks and kudos to all of you and all of your teams. For an incredible outcome and performance in twenty twenty three, and we look forward to even bigger and better and all the more in twenty four. Thanks so much. Have a great day, everyone.